Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, take the roll, please.
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District one more set.
Here.
Two, O'Connell. Three, Rodamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Cook. Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present, or anybody that would like to address the council at this time. How about Diana? If you want to have, please have the ladies come up here so everybody in the TV audience can hear you. And this is Toastmasters Month, and Diana will introduce the participants and also will give us the highlights of the proclamation.
Thank you. I'm Diana Johnston. I'm president of our local Toastmasters International Club called Hudson Rise and Shine. And I am here to thank the board here and also to let everybody know that October is Toastmasters Month. Toastmasters International is a group that was founded in 1924, and the purpose of our club is to develop better communication, public speaking, and leadership skills among our members. I have several members with me. I have Amy Coulter, Harriet Gashu, and Ann Hall here with me as well. Some of the things that we do within our club involve people giving speeches based on manuals that they receive, and they're all geared toward learning how to make yourself a better speaker through how you create your speech, through the use of gestures, props, many different things, how to motivate people, lots of different topics that our speeches are on. We also have people then evaluate the speakers. We have people who have different duties, which might be counting, we have what's called an "a" counter, and what they do is, when you're up there speaking, they count all of your little uncomfortable pauses and your "ums" and your "um," you know, those kinds of things. Just put a penny in a can to draw your attention to it while you're speaking. Just a subtle reminder, we also have an area that we do called table topics, which would be good for something like what I'm doing right now, extemporaneous speaking, which you come up and a topic is given to you, and you just start talking on the topic for two minutes. We are a wonderfully fun group. We meet every Thursday morning right over at the municipal building here at 7:00 AM. We are done almost every time by 8:00. We're very good about sticking to an agenda. I encourage anybody who is interested to please come, experience a meeting, think about becoming a member. We'd love to have you, and thank you so much for recognizing us.
How many members do you have?
We are just under thirty members right now.
Okay. Well, it is Toastmasters Month, and I do hereby proclaim October 2006 as Toastmasters Month in the city of Hudson, and encourage all citizens to recognize the many accomplishments and opportunities in communication and leadership skills that this outstanding organization makes possible to its members and to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on any subject that's not on the agenda? Anyone? Based on no response, we'll go to the consent agenda items, and Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of September 18th, 2006. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $412,549.27. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of a temporary operator's license to be used at the Wintergreen fundraising event to be held October 13th, 2006, to Darrell Youngberg, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to the Christian Community Campus Foundation Incorporated to sell wine at a fundraising event to be held October 13th, 2006, at Wintergreen, 1312 Wisconsin Street. To appoint nineteen additional City of Hudson election inspectors for the period ending December 31st, 2007, as submitted by the Republican Party. The complete list is available in the clerk's office upon request. To place on file the community access board minutes of September 26th, 2006, the Sangria EMS Commission minutes of September 25th, 2006, and the zoning board of appeal minutes of August 22nd, 2005. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
Move for approval.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Rodamacher?
Aye.
Cook?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Moreset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
You had a comment, Mr. Wyland?
We missed the quarterly report of the park board. I think you mentioned that one.
Am I staying corrected?
Oh, you did. You just didn't miss, you dismissed it in your, in your reading of it.
That will be included. Need a roll call vote. Thank you.
Second? Moreset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
With that inclusion.
Okay.
Okay? Let's go to a report of the standing committees. Planning Commission requests to release and relocate utility easements. Lot three, block one, Stone Pine, first addition. 518 Grandview Drive and Lot 38 in Vine Hills, first edition. 601 Topaz Lane, Mary Merchant, 518 Grandview Drive.
Plant Commission recommends approval and the release and relocation of the utility easement between Lot three, block one, Stone Pine, first addition, which is located at 518 Grandview Drive, and Lot 38, Vine Street, first addition, I believe it's 601 Topaz Lane. And relocation easement along the new established property line, with either the easement being on five feet on each side or ten feet on Lot 38 of Vine Hills, first addition, with the provision that utility companies sign off on the release of the easement. I have verbal agreements with Exo Energy and ATT West on the release of the easement. Still need to get it on cable, which is probably the least significant of the three, because it's easier to locate that specific utility. But we would not be able to release this until we get those releases from the utility companies.
Okay.
I'll move for approval with the provisions outlined by Denny with the releases.
Second?
Any discussion, comments, or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motions carried. Let's go to two, certified survey map for one family residential lot and one outlot west of Cooley Road and south of Berkmost Park, Eric Rowland.
The Plant Commission recommends approval of the certified survey map as proposed by Eric Rowland. He's the owner of both the proposed lot that has the existing house on it and the outlot, which is the road in the utility area. With a variance to allow the residential lot to not abut on a public street based on the findings, there exist unique conditions in the Berkmost Park neighborhood that our lots do not abut the public street, and this proposed subdivision does not violate the purpose of the city subdivision code and Wisconsin statutes 236. So I understand Lot three, which is proposed, is the existing residence, and Lot one is pretty much the existing Berkmost Park private driveway and utility area. The intentions of Mr. Rowland, who would retain ownership of the outlot, would be to create a homeowners association to take care of the private driveway and utilities, if he can get that cooperation. Otherwise, it's still his responsibility.
Okay.
Denny, I have a question. This lot is for sale, is it not?
Is correct.
And would that, would a sale to a third party in any way interfere with the operation of the outlot, with Lot three, or any?
It would still be Mr., under title of Mr. Rowland, so he'd still be responsible for it.
Okay, thank you. I'll move for approval of the certified survey map as Denny has proposed.
Sir, second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motions carried. Let's go down to Finance Committee. Renewal of tax collection agreement with Sangria County Treasurer's Office. Recommendation from finances to contract with them again this year at the same price. I think that's seventy-five cents per, also, right? Recommendations for approval.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? This is really a good deal for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motions carried. Let's go to six, request of GCI builders for the city to dispose of city property west of River City Center abutting First Street.
Move to have a discussion on this this evening for informational purposes only, and then to refer to Plan Commission for its Thursday meeting.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, motions carried.
The request by GCI basically is to discuss with the city of Hudson, where the city would be willing to dispose of the property west of River City Center, essentially that area between where the present curb line of First Street is, on the east side of First Street, and between there, and the back of the building for River City Center. Today, I received revised plans. I had some very strong concerns about the first set of proposals that was been submitted, because the on-street parking that was proposed would have required First Street to be partially relocated further to the west, which would have been an additional park property that would have been required. Those plans have been changed. All the off-street parking that's now proposed is east, at the east curb of First Street. So you wouldn't have to relocate First Street driving surface to accommodate what's proposed. Plant Commission is scheduled to look at it Thursday. Certainly, we'd welcome any input from the common council tonight on particular issues. I visited with staff in regards to utilities. Water utility appears that it would not be required to be relocated. Sanitary sewer depended on if, if the city would consider disposing the property in the building located, there may be some necessity to relocate the sanitary sewer, but I anticipate now the building's probably been moved farther to the east, and that would not be an issue any longer. But that was one of my issues. So maybe we'll give GCI representatives a few minutes to present their proposal, and maybe we can raise any issues that you want the Plant Commission to look at.
Point of clarification, Denny, that would take us to the middle of First Street?
No. And the way, the way the plans are now, there would be no relocation of First Street.
Okay.
What I saw after the Finance Committee, I wanted to raise the issue that I had with them, and they said, no, their plans have been changed. But I'll be getting a set of those revised plans so we can take a look at it before Plan Commission.
Okay. Someone?
Can I use the drawing?
Sure.
Might make it clearer where this is.
And then just grab the mic so the TV audience can hear you.
Thanks.
Some of the audience might have a little bit of a hard time trying to see this from all the way back there. We did do it in color. The board members all have one. Basically, what you're looking at here, the yellow is the existing building that is there. The green space is the city property, which now is all asphalt parking, so if you can understand that part of it. You can see the way the new building is in the black outlined area. Basically, what we needed, we wanted to do is a gateway into the community, you know, coming in so that we could stagger the building, so give it a decent river effect and a decent city effect as you're coming into town instead of one straight long building. We're also, that's where we can get more additional parking. The parking is not going to be used just for this building, it'll be across easements, so hopefully it'll help relieve the city of Hudson for some property downtown in general for parking, because it won't be just allocated to this building. There's also additional forty stalls on the bottom here, on the lower end of the, by the park area, that we're going to be commuting into there also, into that easement space of the city land there. Any questions on what we're looking for in here? Is there any, do you here have any questions from the council?
I think we understand the proposal. Any questions, council?
Have you considered any other layouts for this building?
We have. With the layouts we need, and with, with what we want to propose here, to get the elevations and to get the amount of square footage we need to make this work, we need to put the building towards the back, because the height restrictions, the city is going to require. By putting it up front, we won't be able to get the underground parking and everything else that we're needing to require with the expense. Normally, on a project like this, to make it work, you need a TIF application, you need something for redevelopment to get it to work. And with, just with this site now, it's, it's been a real challenge to get it to work the way it is.
The reason I ask is because as this is the, one of the largest buildings downtown and the gateway to the city of Hudson, having it look like a series of historic buildings on Second Street would make it look like it's part of downtown. So, you know, maybe each ninety-foot section looked like a different building would say, oh, we are now entering the historic city of Hudson. Where, and putting it back kind of makes it look like a shopping mall.
Well, it won't give you that look. It's, it looks like that on this, but it's going to give you the definition of the breakup, because there is a definitely, you know, you got ten to fifteen feet into separation, and also by having it up here, the three stories high, it's going to be like going through a tunnel effect. Plus, I don't know what the river board would do to have another parking lot to oversee it, you know, from the, from the view from the river. You know, that, because I know in the past, different projects I worked on, Cedar River Act, a lot of them, they don't, they want, they don't mind the building, but they don't want to see a big parking lot, see a parking.
There's ways to address that, too. But the reason, I was just thinking about the, as you come downtown and, as you know, a, a building that changes depth like that isn't, isn't typically historic in its appearance. So that's why it was, something to consider is another, another look of the building from a different angle.
I'll give you an elevation here that'll show you a little bit of what we're trying This is basically what we're looking at for an onlook, you know, different breakups, you know, to do it, you know, the stone on the, or the, on the, on the backside will be all stone, but in the front, you'll have your, you'll stone fixtures, and you'll have your brick on top and your offsets. It'll be broke up. It's going to basically contour for what you have downtown. And I think if you put the three-story buildings and four-story buildings right on the, the road right away, I think you're going to have a huge shadow effect.
If it's right on the road. I've had some other ideas I can talk to you about.
What is the overall heights that you're proposing?
We'll, we'll meet the minimum requirements. I'm not sure exactly what it is. It's like forty-five feet from the down, from the waterfront, but it's like thirty-five from the front side. So it meets, it'll meet all the building requirements the city is asking for.
How does the building get taller if you move it toward Second Street?
Because you, you take it as an average building height, not just from one street to the next. When you're doing, when you got a twelve-foot elevation from Second Street to First Street, so you come out, your medium average here, and then you go thirty-five feet from that.
I was just saying, if the first floor, if it's on First Street as a certain height, and you move it straight forward forty-five feet, still?
It's twelve feet down lower. No, it wouldn't be, because you're, you leave it at, First Street's twelve feet higher. So if you ran that straight across back to the second, you gained twelve feet.
Oh.
Correct. It'll be twelve feet lower, you know what I'm saying? You're dropping down. Or maybe I got them backwards. Second Street's the middle one? Yeah, the first, I'm sorry, yes.
Underground parking, whether you have it associated on First Street, you have it associated on Second Street, you still have underground parking.
So if you take the elevation of a Second Street, and you take the First Street, and you split that, you get your medium height, your average height, that's what you go off of. That's what, that's your city requirements.
Lee, I guess I tend to disagree with you. Coming into town off the highway, it's got that nice open feel and having it set back. I kind of like that. It seems to be safer, brighter, more wide open, having it set back and staggered like they're proposing.
Well, we'll have a chance to take a look at that. Basically, we're, we're getting a general view of what's going to happen, but the question tonight is.
For land acquisition.
Yeah, going to be, going to the Planning Commission, and they will have some input on whether or not their recommendation is to lease, sell, or do nothing with that property outlined in the green area here.
What is, what is your preference, to buy this property or to lease it, or?
Well, just acquire it, is what I'd like to, just acquire the property.
I'd ask you to discuss a matter regarding the property that would be acquired, should that happen. You have forty parking stalls exterior to the building. Don't you also have on that west-facing side of the building, the entrance to the garages for the condo owners? Or am I mistaken? I know that the, the parking ramps for the hotel would be on the end, like the north-south end, with the swimming pool in the basement. But the parking stalls that are exterior on the west side of the building, that you have marked here, public or new parking stalls.
Okay.
Those are, those are not for the condo.
Nothing's, nothing's in granted yet.
No, I, that's why I'm asking you.
The entrance was going to be over on this side here for the, say, for the Radisson or whatever, and then over here is the condo areas coming in on the grade level.
So.
It might be here, we, we might go in off this grade, it all depends where the elevation actually.
So parking for the condo units would?
Indoors.
Indoors, underground parking.
Okay, so, but it is, is it the same ramp that the?
No, they're separate. They, they'll be coming in, there's a swim pool in the middle, and mechanicals, okay, condos on this area, the, whatever, the Radisson or whatever coming in here will be on this side.
Okay. The new parking stalls, do you anticipate those staying at the grade level the rat, which is occasionally flooded, or do you plan to elevate them?
They're going to be at the same grade, probably a little bit more elevated, but not much, because of the road right away.
Okay.
That's already dictating on what we're going to be with our elevation.
Those are truly on-street parking, so it's going to be the same grade as the parking, the street service, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think what we need to look at, too, in planning is, is the city, do we have any need to hold on to this property? I mean, that's kind of the question, are we going to have any improvements on First Street that we need to hold on to the property for any other reason later on? So I'd like to see us look at that.
Sure.
One of the things is, no, I'm not really sure of this, if maybe you may be able to help me with it. I was over there today, again, viewing the property. Right now, it's got all the semi-trailers parked on it now. Is it a cross-easement dedication, or how is that being handled, you know, the way it is? Right now, it's all tar paved.
Yeah.
I was just out there, and it's got a little curb the way there now. Is there an existing easement already granted to that thing, or?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering, that's.
Well, that, that occurred back in 1950.
Correct, that's what I was just trying to verify.
With the network traffic on First Street, and the environment was completely different.
Yeah.
And we obviously wanted that particular development to occur, so we did accommodate the, the owners at that time. We have to evaluate, has anything changed today that would prohibit us from doing exactly what you're asking for? Or should we retain that particular property in case additional traffic or curvatures happen on that turn, so that we at least could do it on our own property rather than taking additional property from the existing park to accommodate whatever happens? I think that's what Kara is basically saying. So we'll have a good discussion on that and planning on Thursday. Right, Denny?
May I ask one last question? I understand that tonight we're just discussing the, the land that you wish to acquire, but last week at our meeting, there was mention of, in the parking lot area, green space to make it more attractive. Will you be coming to planning on Thursday with the different plans showing that green space, which appears to be not there now?
Not at this time, I won't. If the cities are going to require grass down here, or green space, we'll do that. Right now, it's showing pavers. I'd much rather see grass in there, because I know the cost of pavers and the cost of grass as a developer. It's, whatever, when we go at that time, the city, I'm sure, is going to have some type of, you know, plantings that they're going to require us to have. If it's green space, trees, shrubs, whatever it is, we're going to meet those recommendations of the city.
I think what Scott's saying is that if you had a, a sketch of what your proposal would be, you'd be in a, in probably a better favor than just saying it's going to be a parking lot and let us decide. So if you have some sketch or something, or some concept that could get across to us what you had in mind, I think it would be received in a better light by the Plant Commission.
Right now, we do have it as a concept. You can see what we have here. It's all, it's pavers and, and trees.
I understand.
You're saying you want to see sod and trees and shrubs.
Well, actually, the comment I'm referring to is the comment made last week about the parking lot area, not about the west side.
This area, right.
Because it was going to be made to look not like a parking lot, and obviously, that's not been done yet. My, since we're, we're, we're here to give guidance to you tonight, my guidance is to you, as the mayor just said, you know, you better get that done.
I thought you were talking about the lower area.
No, that's okay, I'm sorry, I was misunderstood.
Actually, both, I would, I would stick.
Well, yes.
Yeah, well, I didn't have a landscape, obviously, I didn't spend to have a landscape architect on this.
Exactly, I'm just saying, maybe by Thursday.
Just get one of your artists to do a little.
Sure, rendering?
Yeah.
All right, we can, we can come up with that.
Very interested to know.
But the whole thing is, is when you do a particular rendering, and you change the parking lot around, they're going to say, well, that's not what we've seen, so it's, you got to really be careful. Because I've worked with cities like that before, and your first concept plan, it's...
Well, all we're saying is, you ought to be careful.
Well, I, I know that, I'm saying, it's a concept plan is what we're coming up with.
Anything you can show as far as elevations from Second Street, you know, and how that, how the front end of the building's going to look as the entrance to Hudson would be very valuable.
You know, it sounds like a great program.
Yeah.
We just want it to be compatible with our thinking, the Planning Commission, and our constituents. And once we come to that kind of an agreement, man, I, I think it's going to be nice.
I agree with you guys a hundred percent. I'm making, I'm putting a big investment into this town. I mean, to be honest, I want this to be very, this is a very big proud project of mine.
I understand.
I'm going to stay in here, I'm going to own the Radisson, I'm not leaving, I'm not selling.
Big project for us, too.
I agree, and I, and I want it to be a great positive thing for both of us.
Just help us out if you can.
Sure.
If I may, the last bit of guidance I'd like to give you is that my constituents have been calling me about this, there's a high degree of interest, as you would expect, in this development. And at least from my point of view, there's no need for us to do this quickly. Now, I say that because you've got a big investment, as you just said, and, and time equals money, I understand that. And I'm not trying to tell you you're going to hit any delays, I'm just saying, we want to make sure this is right for the city, because it's going to be around a long time.
But here's the other thing, you got thirty days to make, we got less than thirty days that I have to make a, a ten-year commitment to the city. And that building is going to be staying the way it is for ten years if I don't do this deal, because the owner's here right now, and he's going to have to lease this out to make the revenue work. So you're right, it doesn't have to be done quickly, but for me, it does, for him, it does. I got a thirty-day continuance on this thing to say, either we're doing the project or not, or he's going to leave it the way it is for ten years, because he's going to get a ten-year lease on the existing building. His tenants ain't going to go nowhere. So there's, there's, it's not just my financial part of it, it's the owner's himself, and you got to look at his side of it.
I think what the council is trying to say is, we always have time to do it over, never have time to do it right.
I agree.
So if you had to get another thirty-day extension, that might be in order.
Correct. Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I will try to do whatever I can to ratify, to get all your answers.
And we want to help you as much as we can.
Yeah.
Now, technically, we're only bought in one, but less than a third of an acre there is ever asked from the city for.
Correct.
Very strategic, third of an acre.
I wonder how much a third of an acre is in downtown Manhattan?
Got some beads?
So, yeah. So this is important to us, as Manhattan is to the New Yorkers. I just want you to under, I'm trying to give you guidance here.
I am, I'm listening.
Our state of mind.
I'm listening, I, I just need to know exactly, I understand what you're looking for, but these are conceptual plans, is what I'm saying, that I can go into here and try to figure out this exact layout of the whole parking lot.[1701.12] You're asking for a complete set of drawings. I'm showing you a concept plan that we're asking.
I understand.
It was an artist's concept.
Correct, rendering.
Rendering of what it would look like. That'll help you 100 percent.
We can come up with that. I agree. I know what you're looking for. I can get that for you.
And I think what the key here is that this is the first big development that's happened in downtown Hudson. So the decisions we make here are critical for the rest of the development that will probably occur. So that's why we're so interested in making sure that this gets done and we can make something work out.
I think it's a great project, but let's do it right.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions this time? Refer to the planning commission for Thursday night, right, Danny?
Yes.
Treasurer's report. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at that? Betty's going to give us the highlights of that report and some cautionary verbiage on spending. Hope everybody's listening. Especially in the audience.
Given the council, a summary of expenditures and revenues through August 31st. Basically, the expenditures are right on budget. Some of the individual lines may look like they're over budget, but however, if you put them together in the departments, such as parks, if you look at individual parks, an individual park may be over budget, but if you put all the budgets together, they're still within what they should be. I think the real concern that we have, because our budget consists of 80 percent of labor, we have to really watch anything that might occur, such as snow plowing. From January 1st through the spring, we incurred $60,000 in snow plowing expenses. So if we have things that we can't control like that, we might have to look at other ways of funding it, not sending people out as much. There's other things that we might have to do because we have a tight budget and we'll be over at that point. The revenue side of the budget, we have, building permits are coming in lower than planned. We had budgeted $350,000. It looks like we'll probably be about $100,000 short there. So council needs to be aware of that. We need either to possibly cut some expenditures. I would suggest that we look at it again in a month or two to see how it ends up for the year, and then maybe make some appointments at that time with fund balance that we might have available. I gave you a summary of fund balance. It looks like we have a lot of fund balance, but it is tied up in other things. One of the, we have a million dollars of fund balance that I have that's restricted because it is bond proceeds that hadn't been used for capital outlay. So there's available 400 and some thousand dollars that we can use towards that $100,000 shortage. We also could use some of that $400,000 towards the 2007 budget. However, once it's spent, it's gone. And there's, you know, no other funds to take from until we start building our fund balances up again. So just making council aware of that. Everything else is looking good in the budget at this point.
Any questions on Betty's report? Because I want to, go ahead.
Well, just the $100,000 less budget for the permits, is that residential or commercial or both?
Both.
A private, is it more heavily weighted towards one or the other?
I would, I would say probably, Mike's probably could tell you more, but I would think that it's more residential that's down than commercial at this point.
Right.
That's what I figured.
For, what are contractual services? Because almost every item is over in that. I mean, is that elevator inspections or what is that?
Would be anything other than supplies or, yeah, it would be something, inspections, maintenance agreements, basically those.
Are most of those out, being bid on when they come due or no?
Not if they're smaller items, no.
Okay. I asked Devin if he couldn't tell us exactly where we are. All the budgets are, budget requests are in?
As of today.
And?
The next step will be, as Betty handed it all off to me today, I need to go through now and verify that. I need to go through, I haven't gone through any of the budgets, just because I wait till they come in, so verify that the numbers look right, make sure the personnel costs are right. And then we'll have to see where we are, revenue versus expense, and then try to figure out a plan of attack with staff and keeping you guys posted. There are three or four, we already addressed one of the reclassification requests. There have been a couple other requests for increase in hours for employee, those type of things that will be on the next agenda for you guys to discuss and make decisions on so that we know ahead, before we finalize the budget, what we're doing as opposed to making those changes at the budget hearing. So we want your input on that. We'll do that at the next meeting, and I'll get that out to you as soon as I can.
I'm going to take a look at the budget initially and basically separate the capital project requests from the rest of the regular budget. Then we're going to take and look at the regular budget and what things are wants and needs, and also on the capital projects, try and restrict those to somewhere between, we normally go about a million dollars in our capital projects. This year, we've got requests for probably $8 million. And we'll take a look at that and try and develop some approach for you. And then the next step is to share all that with you and get your input on that, plus the committee recommendations and the needs that are going to occur there. This is a tough year.
There will be cuts. I mean, and I think you know that, but.
Well, cuts.
We already, we're already $100,000 in the hole to start, just with what we have to pay for personnel costs that have already been contracted with what we're getting in from the tax levy. So, you know, the approach probably will be, we'll get to the point where we'll make some cuts probably, but it may get to the point where we're still need to make cuts and we're going to have to hand it back either to the committees or the department heads. And they're going to have to make the decision as to what is a want versus a need, or what's really a need versus kind of a need.
Well, we may have a session with all the council people and the department heads and say, look, this is what's going to have to happen.
But at this point, we, you know, the numbers just got in today, so we're not.
But there are some things that we can continue to do on the capital project side. But I don't want to go into complete debt on that. And Betty's going to have Sean come over and give us some approaches that we might be using for 2007.
For the TV audience, would you want to just go over the 3.06 percent increase we have and how much our labor costs are increasing so they know what kind of issue we're under?
Right. We, the state tax levy increase that we're restricted by the state, we're not able to capture the increase in valuation, you know. We would be able to, without raising the mill rate, increase, you know, the valuation to use that. We're not allowed to do that. We can only increase it by $156,000.
Mm-hmm.
Dollars.
Right.
The personnel costs, all of which are pretty much contracted. I mean, they're, the salary increases, and they're 2.5 percent, so it's not like we're giving 8 percent raises to anybody. It's in somewhere between the 220 and 240,000 dollar range.
240.
240. So we're, we're already kind of starting in the hole. We know building permits are going to be down next year. I mean, obviously, they are the issue. We know they will be down next year, so.
Insurance alone went up, what, $90,000?
I believe so, yes.
So we'll get all these figures together for you, sit down, and we'll hammer it out as a group. Okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Betty. Let's go update on projects.
Good evening. I just want a quick run through the public projects. Hanley Road Storm Sewer, actually, they finished paving and pretty much finished that project on Saturday. So just some final restoration, striping, but Hanley Storm Sewer project is complete. Bids were received on the Riverwalk Park Shelter. They will hopefully be on the next council meeting once we've confirmed that the funding has been received. So you'll see those hopefully the next meeting. Another one I just want to touch on, actually, it's not even on the list, the Banteran North, which is the property right at the southeast corner of Stage Line and Carmichael. They are, started today, full bore ahead of installing the final utilities for those lots that I think.
That's for Citizens Bank.
Citizens State Bank is going to be relocated there, and there's another parcel potentially there. And a final thing I wanted to touch on is the Vine Street corridor study. As you've probably seen, the, have the tube counters, the tubes stretched across Vine Street to take the traffic counts. Last week, there was individuals at the different four-way stops taking counts, traffic counts, pedestrian counts, and documenting the movements there. So we're gathering information at this time, and if all goes well, they're hoping to have the report ready in November.
But all that's left there is just the stop signs, right? We don't have all of the other.
Yes. The delineating tubes were removed. It was restriped to be, you know, eliminate the turn lanes, and then the stop is just located at the center of Vine and Diamond Drive.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Angela? Thank you. Let's go to new business, emergency siren update and recommendations. Eric the Great, going to tell us all about that?
Of course.
That was a good summary that you included in our.
In about, in and around August, it came to my attention that sometimes the sirens were not being activated. We did some checking with the manufacturer, the sirens themselves, and we found that there are general maintenances needed. There are some issues that are listed. We have two sets of sirens. We have the American Signal located on Eighth Street and on Hanley Road. And on Chestnut Street, we do have one of the old federal sirens. The federal siren is not in any way like the American Signal sirens. That's landline operated by the communications center, so that's phone activated. The other two are, they act like a pager when they're activated by the dispatch center. They send out a pager. We do have a computer upstairs and that lets us know when they are activated, and we can activate them up there.
Are they all working?
They're all working.
Thank you.
They're all working. But there are some, they did find some issues with some of the sites, starting, they haven't been serviced or maintenance since they were installed back in 2000, and things like gear drives, things like that. There are no battery backups for those in case of power failure. And the other thing that needs to be addressed in the future is the poles that they're standing on. They're, right now, they're big wooden poles, and they have different ratings and all that. And they're starting to show some age and stress, bird damage, that, so cracks within the woods, so that's, but I am working with several, either grants or donations to replace those.
Do you work with Excel on trying to get some poles?
I'm waiting for a phone call back on that.
Maybe, once we get the poles, I know they aren't going to put them in for us, but maybe Jim can help you.
Right.
And direct you to somebody who could put those poles in the position.
Power, yeah, I can get with Jim on that.
His head's going like that.
The cost of doing some maintenance on them right now was quoted at 1425. That's if we use their vehicle boom truck. If we use our own boom truck, that'd be $900. That's for both sirens.
Have we got any Homeland Security dollars that are in?
Not in the works that I know of this year, no.
Everybody seems to be getting Homeland Security dollars but us. General cost of the other stuff, how about battery backups? Do you have a cost estimate?
Those are going to be about 500 apiece for battery backups. I didn't list that at this time.
That to me seems kind of important. Maybe it should be a budget item for you. I know that, that's. Well, let them take a look at that whole package because I think it's important, especially what happened in Rogers, Minnesota. And we want to make sure that our sirens are operating and that they can be activated, and most importantly, that they're in good shape. And I've kind of told Eric that he's responsible for that, and up to date, he's done a good job. Hope he'll carry that on and give us some dollar figures that somewhere we'll have to find some monies to do it. Very important factor. Any questions, Eric? Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Street name, Pearson Drive for Road Right Away, Resolution 13-06.
There's a requirement by the City of Hudson, when the road just east of Carmichael Road was created, that once it extended into what was the Banter residential area, now is the Banter commercial area, that roadway would go from private driveway to public street. And that now has happened, and because Pearson Drive is the extension of that road, it'd be our recommendation to name the street Pearson Drive as continuance of that street.
Okay.
Move to suspend rules.
For a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All? Motion's carried.
Move to adopt Resolution 13-06, establishing Pearson Drive.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All? Motion's carried. New business, Dee, consider changing the date for first council meeting in November. And had some communication with Devin and the clerk, and we're thinking about the 8th, was that, or the 9th?
The 8th, the day after the election.
The day after the election. Can you handle that with all of the involvements and furniture?
There's reports that need to be filed with the county, but we'll make your work.
Okay.
Move to change the date of the first meeting in November from the 6th to the 8th to make room for setting up of election machines.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All? Motion's carried. Will finance be that day, too?
Yes.
Let's go to E., request by James Caspers and Corey Pope to erect a fence at 1800 Stone Pine Bay within the Grandview Drive Right Away and request to enter into a use agreement.
And the Casper, or the Caspers and Corey, James Casper and Corey Pope at 1800 Stone Pine are building a swimming pool in their backyard, and are required to fence that area in by our building code. The request here is, there's a landscape area pretty much along the property line. If, they're requesting to be able to build the fence on the west side of the landscape area, which would be into the street right away a little bit. You know, they ask if they get a permit for a fence in that location. I said administratively, the city cannot issue a permit in that location unless the city council would approve a use permit, which the conditions are is that if utilities or city requires the use of the easement, then the fence would be, need to be removed at the expense of the owner. And if they relocated that location, again, the expense would be of the owner. If the city determines that the right-of-way needs to be used in the future, then we reserve the right to have the fence relocated.
Danny, in order to comply with state statutes on this, would they not then have to also tear up or remove their swimming pool?
No, not necessarily. No, they can build a fence on their private property.
So if they can build the fence close enough to the swimming pool to comply with all prevailing laws now, why don't they just do that?
Well, we discussed that with staff. I mean, we discussed that with the owners. And their request was, I mean, the staff's not opposed to them building on the right-of-way. We're just saying, if you want to make a request to the city council to do that, then it's got to go. Other than that, build it on your private, if the city council doesn't approve it, then it's got to be built on your private property.
I'm grateful, and we want it.
Want to come up so TV audience can hear you? Sorry.
We want it on the right-of-way because of all our landscaping. So it's going to be wrought iron, it will blend right in, you know. So I don't want it on the inside so that we feel caged in.
Plus, your landscaping would be on the outside.
On the outside, right.
I'll move for approval.
For a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Would there be any concern if, if other residents up that same line wanted the same variance, would we have any problems issuing the same variance to other homeowners?
Well, no, I mean, if there's an issue, then they take the fence down and they get a, you know.
I just want to make sure, right, I just want to make sure we're saying that it's, if it's okay for this family, it will be okay for other families.
I think the way the lots are laid out, it wouldn't be a continuance thing of the next one, the next one, and the next one, asking for the same.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
They're asking for a conditional use permit, correct, Danny?
No.
This is a use. Or is it a variance?
It's just permission by the city because the city has utility easement. It's not a condition of the permit.
Right. I understand that.
It's by agreement only between the city and the property owner.
We've issued this type of permit.
Which can be rescinded at any time by the city.
By the city decides.
Right. Much like a conditional use permit, which is not...
Your concern is well taken, though. It won't, will they have to remove the pool? That was your concern?
Yes.
And the answer's no. You could fence it.
If the answer to that is no...
It's far enough away.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have to do it.
I know that I'm thinking out too far on this, but springboarding from what Lee said, I would dearly not like to have a lot of swimming pools installed with a lot of fences on our, in our utility easement. And then the day comes when we need it and we've got the room packed full of people saying, "How can you possibly do this to us?"
That's right.
You know? Because we've had that happen before.
But as the mayor pointed out, the way the lots are laid out, that's not gonna happen because you've got side lots, front lots, up and down, ran view.
It could happen. It could happen, but not continuance.
I had one other question or concern. In the setback, I was talking to Danny earlier today, the setback is set there to make sure that we have enough area to pile snow. And is there any danger that our snowplows will knock this fence over?
Well, not likely. There could be snow that'd fly up there and hit the fence. But I think, you know, they're gonna have to realize that's a possibility. I don't think it'd be definitely...
If the snowplow hits the fence, we've got issues. No, I mean, I'm just, yeah, that's a good point. No, I was just thinking of the trajectory and making sure that we're not gonna damage it the first year.
This brings up a good question. As part of this agreement between the city and the landowner, do they indemnify us from any damage to their fence at all by any city workman? Is that part of the agreement?
Yeah. If any improvements are damaged through the exercise by the city of its rights, the property owner is responsible for replacement or restoration of such improvements.
Okay, okay, no problem.
And the answer to your other question is, how can you possibly do this, is we require them to sign an agreement that says, "Look, if the city ever needs this property, you agree to take it down." So they go, enter into this knowing exactly what the conditions are on installing that fence.
It's not like a solid fence, so the snow is probably gonna be going right into your landscaping or the...
It was just a concern to make sure.
No, it's a good one, yeah.
They were provided a draft of the agreement to look at it for tonight, so we understand the conditions.
And it is over ten feet from the road, so we need to scale out of snow. We've never had it go into our landscaping, and it's gonna be right on top of our landscaping.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Thank you. F., consider changes to the municipal code, Chapter one eighty-one, Parks and Recreation, Ordinance number fourteen dash oh six. Catherine has authored or constructed something for us here. Maybe you wanna read that for us?
Yeah, that's, this is following up on the discussion at the last council meeting regarding use of park facilities. And basically, the ordinance currently, just as far as hours, there was concern about using it after hours. And the ordinance just states that hours are to be posted. And so hours both for the park and the facilities will be posted, and we're just making it clear that use of all park facilities must comply with posted signs. That's just to make it clear that if someone does not comply, a citation can be issued for violating the ordinance. Then the other concern raised was fires. Fires primarily in, some shelters and some parks have fireplaces.
Right.
And so one change, and I worked, I discussed this with Jim, right now, the code allows cooking for, or fires for cooking. I just made it clear, barbecues or grills, you can't put together some makeshift thing and use it for cooking. The other thing is that he would like to have a permit, require a permit to use fireplaces in the shelter just because it is a public safety hazard. It, you know, cleanup is involved. Just a little more regulation on that. And so that's the other amendment in Part B.
Unless you can point the finger to the individual who acquired that permit for the fire. Before we go into that, I don't know if this is permissible, but I wanted Jim and the acting chief to tell us the status of the signs that were put up there and the results. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
After the last council meeting, we placed some signs, Prospect and the bathhouse for the facilities there, limiting hours sunrise to sunset. And then at Prospect in the pavilion, a restricting fireplace, the use of fireplace without permit. Initially, the signs were put up and vandalized. The second day vandalized less. The police have been fairly aggressive in enforcement. And basically, the last week, our vandalism has dropped to virtually zero.
Right.
And I guess I wanna thank...
The chief certainly took some corrective action. He's gonna tell us what he can about that. But I've been on surveillance just about every day. I don't see anybody up there anymore. Chief?
We have some very good officers here in this town because we have a number of people that went up there and used a lot of different techniques. And there were a number of arrests made last week. I won't get into any details, but that seems to have had a big effect on the conduct of the individuals, which is basically what we wanna do.
Well, and once we pass this ordinance, you know, the policemen can then go up there if they're after hours and say, "Hey, the pavilion's closed, then please remove yourself." Which I believe the closing time before was eleven o'clock. So there's a lot of activity and a lot of fires and a lot of congregation in those areas from, say, seven o'clock till eleven. But now, that won't happen. And it seems like it's working very good. And I wanna thank you, gentlemen, for taking the corrective action that you have. Any questions?
I just had a question about the fees in Section B. I wouldn't, what's that for?
Well, I put it in so that the direct park director would have the authority to establish a fee. I think it's primarily, and I don't know what Jim is thinking on this, but a deposit for cleanup, similar to other park, use of park facilities.
The issue gets to be, is if they go up there and make a mess, we wind up having to spend a substantial amount of time cleaning up. You know, you leave the place, it's clean, there's ashes in the fireplace, but other than that, we're not seeing charcoal writing on the wall. You know, fine, we'll refund your deposit, no problem. If there's a mess...
I think that's a good idea.
Attempt to cover any over and above the normal course of cleaning.
Yeah, any quote extraordinary, you know, dealing we have to do.
Plus, the users are gonna be a little bit cognizant that, gee, they wanna get their money back.
I just don't wanna get into a habit of charging fees to citizens that are already on the park.
I think...
Oh, it seems to me that came up when you were on the park board.
I think basically, it's a deposit as opposed to a fee. And I guess I wanna...
I understand it now.
Take the opportunity to do things, to thank some of the residents up there for helping out, being additional sets of eyes. And Randy for getting an article in the paper. I think that has helped as well.
Well, Randy, keep in mind that a lot of the use of our parks is by people who don't own the park. It's by people who don't live here in Hudson.
Right.
Yep.
Is there, looking at the way this is written, we already have a, if you wanna reserve the pavilion for a large gathering or reserve it for any way, you've gotta, you pay a fee for reserving the pavilion. Can't we tie these two together, reserve the pavilion? You have to reserve the pavilion if you're gonna have a fire in the fireplace.
No, not necessarily.
Well, the, what I'm, right now, you've got them separate. You can get a fireplace permit, but you, somebody else can get a pavilion permit? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. It seems like they should be tied together, that if you reserve the pavilion, you can also get a fireplace permit.
Certainly. But if somebody were to come in and just say, you know, "We're gonna be up there. We would like to just have a, you know, be able to use the fireplace."
Yeah, a little evening fire.
And they are not, you know, they're not gonna reserve it. You know, they would make its neighborhood thing, whatever. That's fine.
Reserving the pavilion means you have to turn on electricity, you know, that's a whole...
It's holding it for you as opposed to someone just going up there and taking their chance.
The other question I had was, on the reserving the pavilion permit, would it be possible to allow hours of operation past dark? So they say, "I wanna reserve the pavilion, but I would like to use it until ten." Could we do that through the permit instead of...
Right. Right. The part of the, part of the permit would be hours.
So we could go beyond dusk. We'd go beyond dusk if you had a permit.
Right. And what will happen is if that's the case, if it goes beyond, we will carbon the PD such that they know that if there's somebody up there utilizing it, it's permitted use.
Okay.
And they can say to Jim, "We wanna be there till ten o'clock."
Sure.
Fine. Police know about it. He knows about it. And everything is covered.
So I'm wondering if A needs to be modified to say something about, unless by permit?
Well, what, you could have your signs say hours are sunup to sundown except by permit.
That's what the signs do say.
Oh, it does. Okay, thank you.
I think we're covered.
All right.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried.
Move to adopt Ordinance fourteen oh six to amend Section one eighty-one as stated.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, though.
Warrsette?
Yes.
Wieland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Vanamacher?
Yes.
Cook?
Okay. Communication and recommendations of the mayor, reappearance of Dave Holt to the Public Utility Commission. Recommendation from North Hudson was to put Dave on there and just need confirmation of that particular appointment or reappearance.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Proclamations, as two thousand and six is Fire Prevention Week, and we've already had the Toastmasters Month. I'll read a little bit of this. Whereas smoke and poisonous gases are leading causes of death in fires and can kill us long before the flames reach us. And whereas developing a home fire escape plan and practicing home drills regularly are critical to escaping a fire safely. And whereas proper installation testing and maintenance of smoke alarms are part of a thorough home fire escape plan. And whereas by preventing the leading causes of home fires and by developing and practicing a thorough home fire escape plan, people can greatly reduce their risk to fire. Whereas the fire service of the Hudson Fire Department is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fire. Whereas the members of the fire service are joined by the citizens of this community and businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire prevention efforts. I therefore, Jack Bro, proclaim the week of October fourteenth, two thousand and six is Fire Prevention Week. Call upon the people of Hudson to participate in fire prevention activities, homework in school, and to heed the message to prevent cooking fires. This is great. Watch what you heat, as the two thousand and fire prevention week theme suggests. Okay, that'll be displayed here in City Hall and also in the Hudson Star Observer. Communications recommendations for future agendas. Any alter person? This is before we go into a close session.
Has our new computer system been installed yet?
It's here. It's not installed.
I was wondering if you had an update from Michael of how it's going.
It's working fingers clean.
He's putting in about fifteen, twenty hours a week on it. And all the, I think the majority of the parts are here now. So we're gonna be setting it up in that room off of two eleven. That kinda goes back now as we're gonna set up, so.
Just like to get a report from him when he's done, maybe after a couple of weeks, you know, what his thoughts are.
Yeah. Anyone else? City Attorney?
Nothing here.
City Administrator?
Just a reminder that anybody that is interested in registering to vote, we'd encourage you to do that, you know, at your earliest convenience so that you're not having to do it on Election Day. Just makes things run a lot smoother for everybody. Any other election information, Nancy?
Absentee voting can take place anytime after October seventh. The ballot should be here by October seventh, which happens to be a Saturday. So then, it looks like Monday, the ninth.
Okay, we're gonna go into closed session.
So moved to go into closed session. Oh, yeah, he needs to, yeah.
To nineteen point eight five for the purpose of a...
To confer with, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, to confer with legal counsel, re, possible litigation from non-renewal of Class B beer, license to all season golf links, Mark Christopherson.
Move to go into closed session.
I'll second that bullshit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Vanamacher?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Wieland?
Yes.
Warrsette?
Yes.